Good afternoon. I think we are ready to start again, Mr Charland. Thank you.
Thank you very much, my lady. Can I begin with picking up some of the points in relation to questions I was unable to answer this morning? The first relates to a question from Lord Sales about what Lord Roger said on the issue of quality of user. His judgment is less clear on this issue. He does talk about, paragraph 93 to 94, he talks about the tripartite test being well established, but there is perhaps some suggestion that there may be a further consideration. However, he does agree with Lord Walker, who expressed a clear view on the quality of user. That's paragraph 79 of the Lewis judgment. Second query also came from Lord Sales relating to how Lord Justice Lewison approached the criminal Victorian statutes issue. Can I ask the court to turn to page 204, my lord? At page 204, just above paragraph 37, there is a heading, "Is potential criminalisation a bar to registration as a TVG?" And the court considers that, paragraph 37 through to 62, and 62, end of 62, page 211, the court, or Lord Justice Lewison, with whom the other two judges agree, say, "I would therefore dismiss this ground of appeal." So what Lord Justice Lewison is there is saying that the appellant's argument that potential criminalisation is a bar to registration as a TVG fails. Now, from paragraph 63 onwards, he goes on to consider the separate question whether continuing use would be a criminal offence. But given his conclusion on the earlier ground, that the potential criminalisation is irrelevant, that is not a necessary part of his conclusion. So he adopts the same approach as our argument, that they are two separate elements that the appellant needs to establish. I was also asked about Victorian law of nuisance. I've not been able to dig up a huge amount of that, amount on that. The best I can do is to refer you to the case of Remington, which is at page 1469, where at paragraphs 8 to 12, the court sets out the history of the crime of public nuisance. I apologise, I can't go beyond that at the moment. Lord Stevens asked about the 1992 regulations. I believe Mr Holland is going to address the applicability of those. So I believe those were all the questions, the outstanding questions I had. I hope they were. But I'm going to now return to my submissions on ground two. I'm going to address the fourth of the five sections, which is the specific statutory language used in the two Victorian statutes in issue. We set out our analysis of the particular provisions at paragraph 82 to 91 of our written case. That's for your reference, page 152 to 155. And I don't think I need to repeat much of what I said there or elaborate on it. Broadly, we say the approach adopted by Lord Justice Lewison was correct. The difficulty in addressing the court on this particular point is we don't have any concrete uses that are alleged to be criminal. So before the Court of Appeal, as I said, the placing of pallets was analysed, the driving of HGVs was analysed, and the view was it wasn't damaging the soil. So there's nothing specific for the analysis to bite on. There is one matter I did want to elaborate on. If I could ask the court to turn to page 113 of the bundle. At page 113, you have the appellant's written case discussing section 12. And at paragraph 95, he sets out five separate offences on his case. And you'll see, under Roman II, he highlights the words "and without lawful authority", where any person willfully and without lawful authority leads or drives any cattle or animal on a TVG. And the conclusion, the point that's drawn by the appellant from this is at the end of paragraph 95, where he says, "The words are underlined in Roman II to emphasise that this offence alone is subject to proviso as an act which would otherwise be unlawful, may not be unlawful because it's carried out with lawful authority." We say that the appellant's submission misunderstands the purpose of the insertion of these words into section 12. Can I refer you to the DEFRA guidance, which you'll find at page 1620 of the bundle, my ladies and my lords? And you'll see on page 1620, you have DEFRA's views on these provisions. I would point out that DEFRA acknowledge at the outset of this document, it's non-statutory and is obviously not binding. But in relation to section 12, willfully taking any cattle or any other animals onto a green without lawful authority, the footnote says DEFRA's view is a local inhabitant who takes an animal onto a green and exercises their right to enjoy lawful sports and pastimes, does not commit a criminal offence under section 12. In this context, lawful pastime would include dog walking and might potentially include horse riding. Lawful authority would include grazing cattle or other animals and exercise a registered right of common. So the insertion of the words "without lawful authority" there is to prevent the criminalisation of dog walking, essentially. It's got nothing to do with the landowner's use. And we adopt the approach taken by the Court of Appeal that when construing these statutory provisions, you need to take into account the fact that they are referencing public nuisance and an essential element of that is the offences are committed with, the action is taken without warrant of the law. That is not the case here because such continuing uses are permitted and therefore there is no breach of the Victorian statute. Fifth and final aspect of this ground two is response to the appellant's assertions of unfairness, uncertainty and vagueness. We say the approach taken by the Court of Appeal in this case is neither uncertain nor unfair nor overly vague, as the appellant alleged. At the most basic level, it makes it more difficult, in practice extremely likely, for landowner to be prosecuted. We don't accept that the landowner will have any particular difficulty establishing its pre-registration usage. Because if registration is contested by a landowner, what you will have, as we had here, is a detailed factual inquiry by a non-statutory inspector looking at how the land was used during the relevant 20-year period. Where the landowner is contesting registration on the basis that its use of the land precluded registration, as in this case, there will inevitably be findings of fact as to the landowner's use during the relevant period. And that's occurred in this case, and it also occurred in Lewis, where Mr Chapman's analysis detailed the golf use in some detail. Obviously, in this case, we additionally have Mr Justice Barling's findings of fact. So we say it isn't vague, it isn't problematic. You will have clear findings of fact on what the landowner's pre-registration uses are. Now, the appellant makes a further point in relation to the Court of Appeal's construction. It says it undermines the statutory scheme.
My lord, I do apologise, before you move on from that.
Of course, my lord.
In the course of a criminal prosecution, if something is not criminal, if it has the warrant of the law, does the prosecution have the burden of establishing beyond reasonable doubt that there wasn't the warrant of the law? Or does the person who's prosecuted have to bring forward the defence?
The legal burden is on the prosecution, my lord, because that's an essential element of the offence, we say. So the landowner mainly will obviously need to raise it as an issue and say, "Well, actually, I have lawful authority", and it would be then for the prosecution to prove that there was no such lawful authority. So the final point on ground two, we say, contrary to the appellant's case, the Court of Appeal's construction of the Victorian statute does not undermine the statutory scheme. In reality, it's not the Court of Appeal's construction in this case that is said by the appellant to undermine the statutory scheme, but the court's conclusion in Lewis adds to the landowner's post-registration right. However, the appellant accepts that Lewis is correctly decided and it's not appealed against the Court of Appeal's conclusion as to the landowner's rights to use the land post-registration. Therefore, this argument goes nowhere. That just, yes, Lord Barlow?
Just a couple of points in relation to those submissions. Lord Justice Lewison, as I understand it, had an alternative approach to construction. One was the one you've mentioned, without warrants of the law. The other was to read the statute as dealing with interference with the use and enjoyment and to read in what he's meant by rights to use and enjoy, the give and take principle, if you like. I was just wondering if you're adopting that as an alternative.
I am, I am, my lord. We are adopting everything Lord Justice Lewison said.
The second point about the uncertainty, that assumes that you've got some sort of inquiry. Let's assume that that's not the case, that there's a registration, not challenged, but then the landowner wants to carry on with what he's doing and recreators say, "Well, you can't do that anymore."
Well, my lord, I don't accept that where a landowner is using the land, that it would be registered without any dispute. There's only been two cases where you've had coexisting uses, the use of the landowner and use of the local inhabitants, Lewis and this case. And in both cases, the landowner took strong issue with the registration, which led to the non-statutory inquiry. So I don't accept, in reality, that this will arise. But on the assumption that it does arise in a particular case, I accept that the landowner there wouldn't be able to point to something and he would have to gather the evidence to indicate what its lawful use was, in the same way that the landowner gathered evidence before the inquiry. So it wouldn't have a simple route, but there would be a route, my lord. Very grateful, my lord. That takes us to the third and final ground, which I do intend to take briefly. Can I ask the court to turn to the grounds of appeal, which is pages 32 and 33 of the bundle? So here, the basis of this ground is set out. Ground three is the quality of the user by the public, in this case, is not such as to qualify it for registration. The first point to note is it's referenced to quality of user by the public. But of course, the public's use is wholly irrelevant to the issue of whether a TVG should or should not be registered. The critical issue is the use by the local inhabitants and the courts have made clear that they are not synonymous. If you can't show use by local inhabitants, and there is a definition of local inhabitants, talking about the locality in the neighbourhood, you fail even if there's clear use from people coming down from London, for example, to Essex. So we say, on that ground, on that point, this ground falls away immediately. But there are further problems with this ground. The genesis of this ground, you'll see from paragraph 32 of the grounds of appeal, the basis of this ground is said to be Lord Hope's at paragraph 67. And Lord, this is the argument that's being said. Lord Hope at paragraph 67 essentially says it's an additional question looking at the quality of the user. You'll see where this quote ends. The second question is whether the claim can be made out. If we look to paragraph 67 of Lord Hope's judgment in Lewis, at page 635. At page 635, at the bottom, we have paragraph 67. And I took you through this carefully before lunch. Where the court talks about quality of user, it is referring to the language of 154, or in this case, 153. You decide whether there has been sufficient quality of user by looking at whether there's been use by a significant number of the local inhabitants, have they been indulging with lawful sports and pastimes? What Lord Hope is definitely not saying here is, "Oh, there's an additional question you need to look at beyond the text of section 15, the quality of the user." And that is clear from the words omitted from the grounds of appeal. The last four lines, where Lord Hope says, "Once the second question is out of the way, either because it's not been asked or because it has not been answered against the owner, that's the end of the matter. There is no third question." Ground three is premised on the existence of a third question, which doesn't exist. Now, if one looked at the claimant's grounds, the written case on this, at paragraph 116, the ground has shifted slightly and the appellant is relying on paragraph 114 from Lord Carr's speech in Redcar, or one line. The line being relied upon is the question is whether they acted in a way which is comparable to the exercise of an existing right. So that appears to be suggesting that in addition to the net fee, net clamps and the various other elements in section 15, there is an additional question. But if you actually look at what Lord Carr says at page, at paragraph 114, which is page 647, my lords and my ladies. The sentence quoted begins on the fifth line, right at the end of the fifth line, but it's been taken completely out of context. And what Lord Kerr is actually saying is the complete opposite. He is saying there is no additional question. So again, looking at the analysis, there is, it is directly contrary to the ratio in Lewis, we say. We deal with this at page 156, this ground at 156 to 158. At paragraph 94, we say, "Properly analysed, this ground comprises of two points. Whether deciding whether or not to register land as a TVG, the registration authority is required not only to consider whether all the elements of a TGV set out in section 15 are met, but an additional question, namely whether it would have appeared to a reasonable landowner that users were asserting a right." And the second point that is underlying this claim is the appellant's use and the public's use of the land cannot sensibly coexist at all. The first point is directly contrary to the ratio of Lewis and indeed, it's directly contrary the paragraphs relied upon by my learned friend. The second point, whether the appellant's use and the public's use can exist, consensably coexist at all, is a question of fact for Mr Justice Barling. The Court of Appeal held it was a question of fact and there is no appeal against that. So my lords and my ladies, that essentially is the end of ground three. Unless I can assist you any further, those are my submissions.
Thank you very much indeed.
Thank you, my lady.
I think we turn now to Mr Holland. You're muted, I think. Muted.
Yes, I think I'm now unmuted. My ladies, my lords, Mr Eaton and I respectfully adopt the submissions of our learned friends, Mr Charland and Miss Taunton. As will be apparent from our respective written cases, the respondents' responses to this appeal overlap to a significant degree and I do not propose to spend time this afternoon repeating oral submissions made by my learned friend, Mr Charland. We do however make the following additional submissions, particularly in the light of exchanges between bench and bar thus far. These submissions divide broadly into three topics. Firstly, town and village greens, or TVGs, and parliamentary intention, a matter touched upon by Mr Charland, but upon which we elaborate here. Secondly, Fitch and Fitch, and why the appellant's argument that this court's reliance on that authority is misconceived in Lewis is itself misconceived. I was very grateful earlier today for Mr Charland's generous drumroll. I won't be spending a great deal of time on Fitch and Fitch, principally because we disagree that it is the cornerstone of the judgements in Lewis and Oxfordshire. But I will be addressing the court on that case and its implications. And then thirdly, the Victorian statutes and possible criminal sanction, which we consider provide, together with section 15, a workable and coherent legislative framework and we'll set out why that is. So starting with the first of those three topics, parliamentary intention. TVGs, town and village greens, have been the subject of a considerable amount of parliamentary attention since 1965. We've had the Commons Registration Act in 1965, which your ladyships and lordships will find it, 804 to 813. Don't think it's necessary to turn those pages up. Then after that, the Countryside and Rights of Way Act of 2000, again for your note, 1686 to 1687. Following on from that, the Commons Act of 2006, 779 to 801. And then finally, the Growth and Infrastructure Act of 2013, 1688 to 1693. In enacting the above, Parliament had the benefit of drawing on some comprehensive studies and reports at every single stage. The excerpt that my learned friend, Mr Charland, introduced to the court a couple of days ago from Gadsden provides a flavour of the sort of investigatory machinery available to Parliament in so legislating. And of course, Lord Hoffman provides a fairly extensive account of the history of town and village green legislation in Sunningwell and to a lesser extent in Oxfordshire as well. But what we find from these references is that Parliament has available to it the work of the Royal Commission in 1958, numerous white papers, a common land policy statement in 2002, the Penfold Review, and so it goes on, DEFRA reports. And these are made available to Parliament at each and every stage of legislation. So the machinery of investigation is really very considerable indeed. All of this forms part of that machinery available to government, but not, of course, available to the courts, which are necessarily limited to the facts of the exceptional cases which make their way to them. This is an important point in our submission, not only in appreciating the advantages Parliament enjoys in equipping itself with the necessary knowledge and information to enable the focused and deliberate crafting of the town and village green regime. There were moments in the course of Mr Holland's submissions yesterday, and indeed, moments also in the appellant's written case, when it seemed as though the appellant relies for its town and village green dataset on the 10 or 11 cases which have reached this court or the House of Lords. Given that according to the Open Spaces Society, there are over 3,870 town and village greens currently registered in England and Wales, and as Mr Charland indicated yesterday, no national register, it is difficult to see how Mr Holland could submit to this court as to the rarity of one being registered on commercial land or how the appellant can boldly assert at paragraph six of its written case that neither commercial premises nor roads have ever been held to be town and village greens. And that's in your, in your bundle at page 26. In fact, the first, one of the first, if not the very first, town and village green registrations post-1965, which your ladyships and lordships will find, starting at page 1312 in the bundle, the New Windsor Corporation case, did involve commercial premises, namely a car park which was registered. I leave it to your lordships and your ladyships to inspect that decision if it's considered to be of assistance. Town and village greens have also been the subject of a considerable amount of judicial attention at the highest level. There have been no fewer than 10 cases in the House of Lords or Supreme Court since Sunningwell was heard in 1999, or 11, including this one. Whether scrutiny of the town and village green regime has been conducted by Parliament or by this court, the functioning of that regime and the judgements of the court have always been guided by a clear and where necessary adaptable parliamentary intent. And it is possible, by considering the interplay of the two, to see how the courts have quite properly interpreted that intent. This has been most evident where aspects of the town and village green system have been litigated concurrently with the passage of new legislation, with the Oxfordshire case and the Commons Act of 2006 being a good example of this, with the act post-dating the judgement by only two months. What emerges from this exercise is an understanding that the intention of Parliament in enacting legislation relating to the registration of town and village greens was to facilitate the retention of a broad sweep of valuable public recreation areas, the value of which can only have increased in recent months as we have all learned to adapt to the physical restrictions which have come with the global pandemic and the premium that this has placed for everyone on the availability of public open space such as town and village greens for recreation and outdoor social contact. And Miss Lee Key, with its attractive waterfront, provides a focal point for the local inhabitants to meet and enjoy exercise and recreation and offers a very fine example of a Class C village green and a much-needed and much-valued community facility for the inhabitants of Miss Lee. It is noteworthy that Parliament has not sought to limit the circumstances, whether by reference to the character of relevant land or the activity of its landowner, both of which, we agree with my learned friend, Mr Charland, could be regarded as one and the same, a point that he made earlier today, in which, in which town and village green registration might occur. It did not, for example, Parliament did not, for example, when enacting the Commons Act of 1965, qualify the right to registration by imposing an obligation to first assess what post-registration impact might be upon the landowner or for that matter, as to any particular requirement relating to the character of the land to be registered, which, as we understand it from yesterday's submission from my learned friend, Mr Holland, is a matter not pursued, albeit that the appellant does pursue the point in relation to the activity of the landowner.
But what we do know is that Parliament did not...
But what we do know is that Parliament did not draw any distinction under section 15 as to what rights were required by the inhabitants upon registration. And that's one of the indications from which it might be said, well, Parliament could only have contemplated that registration would occur of land that was effectively vacant.
Well, my lady, it's quite right that whilst registration is conclusive proof of, it is not proof as to the nature of what has been registered. Now, it would be open, of course, to Parliament, in the same way that Parliament has enacted section 192 of the Town and Country Planning Act, to introduce a mechanism by which the nature of the use, which would be particularly relevant, of course, in cases of co-existent user, could be recorded. My learned friend, Mr Charland, has explained in most cases there will be a good record of what it is that local inhabitants and the landowner have done over the 20 years qualifying period. But were Parliament to consider, perhaps even in the light of the judgment that this court will give in this case, that it would be sensible, useful, necessary for the precise nature of that use to be identified within a document that is public, then that is an option that is made available to Parliament. In the meantime, my lady, we have Redcar, and we have Oxfordshire, and we have from those cases an understanding that in the minority of cases that involve co-existent user, there will be a degree of give and take, there will be a need for, as the judges have described it, common sense, and there will be a need to understand, within that context, what it is that those two parties or those two groups, the landowner and the local inhabitants, have done over that period. So, returning then, it is noteworthy that Parliament has not sought to limit the circumstances, whether by reference to the character of relevant land or the activity of the landowner, in which registration might occur. It did not, for example, when enacting the Commons Act of 65, qualify the right to registration by imposing an obligation to first assess what post-registration impact might be upon the landowner, or for that matter, as to any particular requirement relating to the character of the land. As Lord Walker observed, and this your ladyships, your lordships will find at 627 of the bundle in Lewis, I will try my best not to go back to parts of Lewis that have been covered earlier today in the interest of saving time, but what Lord Walker observed at 627 at paragraph 44 at G was the following: The extensive management provisions in part two of the Act apply to town and village greens only if they are subject to rights of common. This seems to be in line with what Lord Hoffman said in Oxfordshire, that although the Commons Registration Act was intended to be followed by further legislation in relation to the management of commons, it was by no means clear that Parliament contemplated further legislation as to rights over greens, which it is submitted shows that Parliament, with its eyes wide open, elected not to strictly prescribe the operation of town and village greens post-registration, and nor has Parliament since found it necessary to amend the principles applicable to town and village green registration in the ways for which the appellant here contends, when subsequently enacting the now repealed section 98 of the Countryside and Rights of Way Act of 2000, which, again, your ladyships, your lordships will find at 1686 to 1687, when enacting the Commons Act of 2006, or when further legislating on village green regulation in the Growth and Infrastructure Act 2013, for example, by inserting a new section 15c into the Commons Act of 2006. Two of these pieces of legislation, the Crow Act, the Countryside and Rights of Way Act, and the Commons Act, are considered in Oxfordshire. And I turn again to a paragraph to which we have not been yet referred. It's at page 600 of the bundle, and it is paragraph... At top of the page, starting at B, paragraph 115, Lord Roger says this: It is striking that when subsequently amending the definition by enabling, by enacting section 98 of the Countryside and Rights of Way Act of 2000, Parliament did not use the opportunity to restrict its scope in this way, i.e. to narrow the scope of registrable land. Those are my words. At present, there is a bill before Parliament dealing with some of the same subject matter. Again, it contains no measure to narrow the definition in section 22, says to limit it to more traditional village greens, but if, having taken account of your lordship's speeches in the present appeal, Parliament wished to change the definition in this way, a suitable amendment could doubtless be introduced. And in the same case, my ladies, my lords, turning over the page to 602 and paragraph 128G, Lord Walker said this: In enacting the Countryside and Rights of Way Act of 2000, Parliament, while amending the statutory definition of village greens in other respects, did not consider it appropriate to narrow its scope by reference to the area or character of the land in question, and we would say nor for that matter by reference to the activity of the landowner. Again, my words, not Lord Walker's. But then, returning to Lord Walker's words, Parliament now has the opportunity to revisit this topic, again, if it thinks fit. It is not for your lordship's house to intervene in this process. Such an intervention, we submit, is precisely what the appellant now seeks, and the consequences of its argument, if successful, would be, without the involvement of Parliament, to remove from the town and village green scheme any land which was subject to co-existent user and were therefore a possibility of criminal sanction due to intensification of use might arise. And I add emphasis to those words, intensification of use. My learned friend, Mr Charland, fielded a number of questions based on the premise that criminality would arise even in the event that the landowner continued to use the land as it has over the 25 years of qualifying user. I'll return to that in a moment. But what we submit is it is in the event of intensification that that risk of criminality arises, and otherwise it does not do so for the reasons provided by Lord Justice Lewison. Yes, my lord?
The principle of give and take has presently been construed on the basis that the recreators can increase their use of the land, provided it doesn't interfere with the pre-existing use of the landowner. And I was wondering why the principle of give and take isn't reciprocal, insofar as why can't the landowner increase his use of the land, provided it doesn't interfere with the previous use of the recreators?
My lord, bluntly, bluntly because registration has consequences. And there's no doubt at all that registration limits the freedoms of the landowner, and it increases the freedoms of the local inhabitants, insofar as the exercise of those freedoms will impinge on the existing right to use the land acquired by the landowner over the 20 years qualifying period. Now, it's right, I think, to remind ourselves, as Mr Charland did yesterday, that in this particular case, there's quite a lot of headroom. The landowner could more than triple its activity in terms of throughput, cargo movements, and still not exceed the level that it is able to demonstrate over that 20 years qualifying user. But the principle of give and take, my lord, is not in my submission to be taken to indicate some precise reciprocal arrangement between local inhabitants and landowner. It's accidentally plain that the regime intends to reduce the rights that are available to a landowner, but the accrual of the rights by local inhabitants is very difficult to achieve. There were, back in the 60s and 70s, ways of preventing it, but ever since the Growth and Infrastructure Act, to which I'll turn in a moment, the methods that exist to prevent registration are greater and easier. So I think that's the not very short answer to your lordship's question, yes?
Well, on a related issue, the landowner still controls the land, and therefore any increase in the sporting and recreational activities couldn't involve the construction of items on the landowner's land, couldn't involve the construction of a football pitch or anything of that nature, because the recreator would have no authority to do that.
That is absolutely right. And in any event, that, in this particular case, even my lady, Lady Arden's badminton example, would not be permissible, because it would interfere with the give and take, the occasional passage of HGVs over the TGV. Now, my lord, both you and Lord Stevens and Lord Burrows raised yesterday perhaps opposite points about the possibility, the floodgates arguments. What if the appellant is correct would be the consequence in terms of town and village green applications? Well, in our submission, the effect would not only be on future town and village green applications, but also on currently registered town and village greens because of the mechanism that exists in section 16 to deregister TVGs. So, were the appellant right, it would really mark a very, very radical change in the balance that Parliament has over time, with the occasional assistance of the courts, managed to strike in this area. So, concluding on that point, my lords, Lord Stephen and Lord Burrows, with respect, raised concerns yesterday that are well-founded. As for the visceral unease to which Lord Hoffman referred in Oxfordshire at paragraph 37, which your ladyships and lordship will find at 574 of the bundle, and upon which the appellant relies at paragraph 10 of its written case, as a form of springboard from which to launch an argument that the scope of section 15 registration should be narrowed, it is right to observe that even those expressions of unease come also with an acknowledgement that the circumstances in question were nonetheless what Parliament intended. There are examples of this acknowledgement in Oxfordshire, where Lord Hoffman poses the question, what is a village green, and then proceeds to answer his own question. But since those paragraphs relate more to the Auburn test and the character of town and village greens in the narrow sense, not including the character of use, which the appellant accepted yesterday is not an issue, we would do better to move straight to Redcar four years later, and paragraph 97, your ladyships and lordships, page 643, in which Lord Roger grapples with this unease, but also with the imperative of parliamentary intent, this time in a context which includes consideration of co-existent user. Of course, in the previous case of Oxfordshire, co-existent user was not an issue, and so it's hardly surprising that the indications that are given by Lord Hoffman as to give and take are not developed, because that was not an issue before the court. Turning then to paragraph 97, Lord Roger says this: I would accordingly allow the appeal and make the order proposed by Lord Walker. I confess that I view the outcome with little enthusiasm. The idea that this land should be classified and registered as a village green, when it was really just an open space that formed part of a golf course, is unattractive, say the least. It is hard to imagine that those who devised the registration system ever contemplated that it would produce such a result. But, and these are the critical words, I acknowledge that the previous sentences of this part of the judgment are not helpful on the face of it to accepting the respondent's case, but these are: But given the established case law, and given also that Parliament has not amended the law despite the known problems, the result is unavoidable. And then again, five years later, five years on from that, in New Haven, Lord Newburger held at paragraph 18, which your ladyships and lordship will find at 711, as follows, and I move straight to the latter half of that dictum, Lord Newburger says this: It might have been appropriate for this court to reconsider the Oxfordshire case, were it not for the fact that it was decided while Parliament was considering the bill, which became the 2006 Act. And Lord Hoffman, Lord Roger, and Lord Walker each expressly observed, in the paragraphs just mentioned, that if Parliament was unhappy with the decision, the bill could be amended appropriately, and it was not. So, once again, deference to the will of Parliament expressed at the highest levels of judgment. Finally, then, on this tour of TVG legislation, legislative and judicial key events, the enactment of sections 14 to 17 of the Growth and Infrastructure Act of 2013 is, it's submitted particularly instructive in terms of understanding parliamentary intent, coming relatively late in the development thus far of TVG legislation, and expressly introducing certain limitations on the ability of local inhabitants to register land as a town and village green as it does. Plainly, where Parliament has expressly introduced some such limitations, both in relation to the scope for registration and to measures which a landowner might take to prevent this, and it's noteworthy that Parliament is very much alive to the need to balance private and public interests, and where also Parliament has the benefit of this court's jurisprudence, in addition to other works such as previously mentioned, with all of the mission being but one example, then, but when Parliament nonetheless elect not to impose similar restrictions in relation to those other issues, it can and should, we submit, be taken to have intended that there be no other bars to town and village green registration. By these sections in the Growth and Infrastructure Act, Parliament suspended the right to apply for registration upon certain so-called trigger events, such as the publication of a planning application for the site in question. The mischief at which the changes brought by the Growth and Infrastructure Act were aimed was the use of town and village green applications to stop or delay planned development and to reduce the financial burden and red tape for local authorities and landowners. My ladies, my lords, I cannot improve upon my lady, Lady Arden's summary of these provisions and the inferences that may be drawn from them. They are set out at our written case at paragraphs 19 to 20, which your ladyships and lordships will find at 168 to 170 of the bundle, but also, of course, in the authorities at 684 to 5, the critical paragraphs are 113 to 118. Given time, I won't go to the specific provisions that are provided there and summarised by Lady Arden, but I would invite the court to do so. They do provide a good raft of measures available to landowners to make easier still the mechanism by which registration can be prevented. But I do turn to 114, where Lady Arden says this: Accordingly, it is now an inescapable fact that the actual use of town and village green legislation has, in the light of practical experience and the needs and expectations of local communities up and down the country, eclipsed the original conception of a more limited role for TVG registration. The clock cannot be turned back. Moreover, Parliament has essentially given its approval in that use in later legislation. The Growth and Infrastructure Act 2013 introduced a package of measures designed to restore the balance between the public and landowners, but retaining the same basic system of registration, and those measures are provided there. And then finally, at 118, Lady Arden says this: Moreover, Parliament took no steps in the 2013 Act to revise the conditions for registrations for TVGs. It is, of course, acknowledged that Lady Arden was here giving a minority judgment, and that the effect of Lancashire is to create a special exemption for land which is held for public purposes, but Lancashire was a case which involved conflicts, actual and potential, between different statutory regimes, and crucially, competing public interests, and therefore one in which an issue of law... one in which an issue of law did fall to be resolved by the court under the doctrine of statutory incompatibility. In this case, by contrast, in this case, I beg your pardon, the appellant seeks to argue that even though the port is in private ownership and not subject to any statutory powers, an incompatibility nonetheless arises from the interplay between section fifteen and the Victorian statutes, if applied to a setting in which there is a co-existing commercial use by a landowner, and that is paragraph seventy-six of the appellant's written statement at one oh seven. Lady Black has highlighted the difficulties of seeking an exemption for a category of land as difficult to pin down as commercial. The second respondent respectfully submits that this is a flawed and impermissible attempt to apply the doctrine of statutory incompatibility where it simply does not belong. It is not enough for the appellant to assert, as it does at paragraph seventy-six of its written case, that the possibility of registration must, brackets, by some means or principle, be excluded. Those are the exact words of the written case. With great respect, the appellant appears, as the first respondent has noted, to have an effect retrofitted and attempted to apply a flawed, or at the very least unspecified principle, to support an argument against what it contends is an unwelcome impact of registration in this particular case. The word contends here is used because registration has in the two been completely unproblematic for the appellant. And as Mr Charland pointed out yesterday, it has significant headroom able to triple its current activity without impinging upon the permissible limits of what it can do within the TVG. And all, this is all the more made unlikely when one bears in mind that the Thornbury Warehouse, don't move, the Thornley Warehouse, Thornkey Warehouse, which can be seen on the plan at page twenty-three, has recently been demolished and has permission for residential development. But it is acknowledged, as Lady Arden did yesterday, that the fact of registration would prevent a successor entitled from going beyond this three times increase. In cases such as this one, where no such conflict of statutes or therefore of law exists, the proper means for any adjustment to the scope of section fifteen, if considered necessary, is through Parliament, and all of the machinery of investigation available to it, as for example indicated above. The second respondent does not, however, consider that such a course is necessary here, because the scope for registration of commercial property of which the landowner requires exclusive possession will be rare indeed. And so to conclude on parliamentary intent, despite all of these various opportunities, at no stage in the rich and comprehensive history of Commons or town and village green legislation, including the years following Lewis, has Parliament seen fit to require a registration authority to include consideration of the legal and practical consequences of registration as forming any part of the necessary test met, to be met in a given case, or to impose any form of character test for the registration land in question. It is therefore submitted that very clear inferences can and should properly be drawn from the notable lack of any legislation on post-registration criminality, other issues arising from coexistence, or lack of limitation on the scope of types of land that can result in TVG registration. My ladies, my lords, I now turn on to Fitch and Fitch and its use in Redcar. The appellant contends that Fitch has been wrongly taken as the cornerstone for legal recognition of a continuing fair use, a phrase of its own creation, of the land by the landowner, and that this error has been elevated in Oxford and Lewis into a flawed principle of give and take. That's paragraph sixty-seven of the appellant's written case. Properly scrutinised, however, the appellant's argument that both the House of Lords and Supreme Court have misunderstood Fitch is itself based on a misunderstanding on its part, both as to the facts of Fitch and Fitch, and my learned friend Mr Charland has explained that misunderstanding, and also its proper application to recent co-existent user TVG cases. And in any event, the appellant yesterday confirmed, when pressed to do so by Lord Sales, it makes no attempt by this appeal to overturn Redcar. In its consideration of Fitch, the House of Lords and Supreme Court were simply reviewing the case law, including this particular first instance decision, on how the courts have recognised mutual respect between the competing rights of dominant and servient owners. That case law provides the proposition that is not a free for all, and that the dominant owners do not have to have regard to the lawful use of the land, I beg your pardon, do have to have regard to the lawful use of the land, and may not exceed their rights in such a way as to unlawfully prejudice them. In Oxford, Lord Hoffman used the term give and take, and did so to describe that particular fact, that the landowner is not deprived of all use of his land once subject to the inhabitant's rights. Right. It's noteworthy that Fitch and Fitch appears in the early parts of all the judgments where it is referenced. It is a case, a first instance case, that is used by analogy to establish the simple civility principle, that a landowner does not lose everything. But obviously, Redcar and Oxfordshire too, move matters on from there. And in Lewis, the majority held that a local inhabitant's right to use a green following registration could not interfere with the competing activities of the landowner to a greater extent than during the qualifying period. I cite there, my lords, Lord Carnworth and Lord Sales' succinct summary of the development of the co-existent principle from Oxfordshire, to which my learned friend Mr Charland took the call earlier today, it's paragraph eight. And it is again worth noting that there was no co-existent issue in Oxfordshire, so it is not surprising that the matter is more fully developed in Redcar than in Oxfordshire. The second respondent, yes, my lord.
I'm sorry to bring you back to it, but if a landowner has to comply with health and safety legislation, and has the obligation to do so, and would that empower him to, for instance, set up routes of passages, and so that he would have then lawful authority, and would not be interfering with a village green?
Well, my lord, it's difficult to see that issue arising in this particular case. In this case, because of the circumstances of this case, it is entirely open to the landowner to comply with health and safety regulations in the way that my learned friend Mr Charland has indicated, without needing to impinge on the rights of any of the local inhabitants. So I just don't think that particular issue arises here.
Well, I have misgivings about that, because certainly the narrow bit of the access road would certainly, to my mind, give rise to a serious risk of injury occurring. And so, they're very well.
A point not yet made is that this particular, the town and village green has a four miles an hour speed limit on it. It seems really most unlikely that the health and safety points that are raised by the appellant could ever eventuate in this case. And my junior, I think, is very helpfully about to provide the reference to that, to that speed limit indication. Can I supply that when it's available?
My own experience as a first instance judge is that no matter what the speed limit is, you potentially have difficulties.
My lord, I may come back to that in a moment, if I may.
Thank you.
And there's a ten mile, as they go through.
So the second respondent submits that the Supreme Court in Lewis, yes, I'm very grateful, it's page three hundred and ten, there's a ten mile speed limit, but does it change?
That's the eastern transit.
The eastern transit area has a ten mile an hour speed limit, but I understand that the speed limit reduces further still to five miles an hour, and we'll find the reference for that.
But, Mr Wold, in a sense, you've sidestepped the question by saying it's not going to happen here. Suppose that it would happen here, and the health and safety legislation did require a step to be taken, would that give the landowner the lawful authority required to criminalise?
Sorry, I didn't catch the end of your ladyship's question.
Sorry, I managed to mute myself. Would the need to obey the health and safety legislation mean that the landowner would escape any criminal liability for interference with village green under the Victorian statutes? Because he would have lawful authority to do it?
Well, my lady, yes, on Lord Justice Lewison's analysis, yes, because that would form part of the lawful authority. Lord Justice Lewison concentrates on the lawful authority that emerges in the context of nuisance, public and private, that another source of that lawful authority could come from a requirement to act under the health and safety legislation. There's no reason why that could not feed also into the same point. My lord, Lord Sales.
Yes, it was really just to follow up on that, but of course, there might, I would imagine, be scope for argument about what arrangements needed to be put in place to safeguard public health. So for instance, it wouldn't necessarily be the case that there had to be separate traffic across the TVG. I would imagine that there might be scope for argument about whether you could have a warning system, someone that when the port is in operation, is there to direct the traffic and ensure that step-ins aren't there. And presumably, if necessary, and there were a dispute between the recreators and the port operator about what was needed to comply with health and safety, that could be a debate that could be gone into in light of the actual circumstances on the ground. Is that not right?
I think that's absolutely right. I mean, if it were raised in the same way that my learned friend Mr Charland indicated in answer to my lord, Lord Stevens' question about the burden of proof, yes, there are, of course, statutory defences where the burden shifts to the defendant, and the standard reduces to the civil standard from the criminal standard. This is not such a case. So it would be for the prosecuting authority to the criminal standard establish every element of its case. Now, there would be nothing to prevent the landowner raising, my lord, Lord Sales' point in relation to health and safety, in the same way that it might raise that it had over the twenty years qualifying period of user, established a right to act and continue to act in a certain way on the registered town and village green. So I think all of that could be addressed, could comfortably be handled in the exceptionally rare event of a criminal prosecution in this context.
In fact, I was thinking to make a slightly wider point than that, that before you ever got the criminal prosecution, it would be likely that there'd be some exchange of views between the health and safety executive, the port operator, and, so far as relevant, recreators, the local inhabitants, to see if there was some way of accommodating the obligation to safeguard public health under the health and safety legislation alongside the such right of user as there might be for the recreators. So I would imagine you'd go through that process before you ever get to the question of prosecution, because the port operator hasn't put those measures in place.
I beg my lordship's pardon, I misunderstood the point. Yes, there are in effect two safety valves, one as my lord, Lord Sales describes, and then in extremis, in the context of criminal proceedings. And the fence that was mentioned yesterday is an example of this. I mean, there has already been exchanges between the landowner and the health and safety executive in relation to the installation of that fence. Again, I can refer the court to the precise references there if necessary in a moment. I'm conscious of time, I will.
I'd like to see the references to that correspondence. It's not entirely clear where the fence was going to go, so I'd like to have the references.
We will provide those to the court in a moment, I hope. So the second respondent submits that the Supreme Court in Lewis helpfully sets out the parameters of co-existent user. It did not commit the errors in judicial reasoning alleged by the appellant. If more precision is needed as to the scope and nature of post-registration management to balance the competing interests of local inhabitants and private landowners, it would be for Parliament to provide a detailed legislative code. If Parliament considered that such a code was needed, it would have provided it either in the nineteen sixty-five act, or one of the opportunities it has had since then when legislating on town and village greens. Its very absence is an indication that the regime is working well and is sufficiently adaptable to the myriad sets of circumstances which present themselves in the context of town and village green registration. My lady, I now have the, with the tremendous assistance of my junior, Mr Eaton, I now have the reference. It's page two nine four, it's Mr Justice Barling's judgment, paragraph one nine six, where Mr Justice Barling says this, however, I do not understand HSE to have indicated that only a fence of specifically this construction and dimensions would be capable of allaying their concerns. One would expect that if the registration is maintained, a solution acceptable to all and which respects the local rights at the water's edge would be achieved. I see no reason why that would not be possible. As Mr Eaton stated in his submissions, Mr Eaton then acting as solicitor advocate in the case, it simply requires a fence that performs a safety function without making the lawful activities of recreational use impossible. For example, it would surely be easy to crab over or through a fence or guardrail of appropriate height and construction. As to the likely outcome in the event of litigation to compel the removal of any kind of fencing, I do not propose to speculate, except to say that it would be surprising if a civil court were to grant a discretionary remedy to counteract a lawful and enforceable requirement of the HSE. So essentially, the second respondent says, there is no reason to throw the baby out with the bathwater, to use a colloquial term, in this case. Lesser measures are preferable if considered necessary, and I referred earlier to the section one nine two mechanism in planning, where a certificate of lawfulness can be the subject of an application and a grant, which identifies at a point in time what use is going on and is lawful. Finally, on this point, before I turn very, very briefly to post-registration criminality, the appellant's fears are unfounded. The land has now been registered as a village, the town and village green since October two thousand and fourteen. There's been no complaint or conflict. There is an inbuilt self-regulation in that rights will only be accrued in co-existent user cases if there is time, space and opportunity for both uses to have coexisted for twenty years harmoniously. And I turn now then, with my remaining few minutes, to the potential criminality point. We say that there is no inherent incompatibility. It's worth noting at the outset that there are no enforcement provisions within the Commons Act two thousand and six, presumably because they already exist in the Victorian statutes. But whatever the reason is, they serve as a necessary bar to actual interference, which in coexistence cases would mean intensification, and thereby give effect to rights of common. Without an enforcement mechanism, these rights would be hollow. The appellant argues that statutory incompatibility arises from within the town and village green statutory framework, which includes the Victorian statutes, but there is no inherent incompatibility. In fact, quite the opposite. The statutes complement each other in a framework which provides for the creation, registration and proper protection of such rights. The Town and Village Green statute book, which includes the Victorian statutes, is perfectly coherent, to coin a phrase used by my lady Lady Arden in Lancashire at paragraph seventy-eight, as a matter of constitutional principle, says my lady Lady Arden, courts must approach the statute book on the basis that it forms a coherent whole. In this case, as in all town and village green cases, the landowner will not be able to carry on as if the town and village green was not there. The intensification rights of the owner are curtailed upon registration, and that is the very purpose of town and village green registration. There is nothing surprising about that, all contrary to the intention of Parliament, but the landowner is not altogether deprived of beneficial use of the land. He may use it, as indicated, as he did during the qualifying twenty years. He may use it, as indicated, as he did during the qualifying 20-year period. The Victorian statutes can be directed at this basic premise by means of the modern and sound interpretation of them, given, I respectfully say, by the Court of Appeal in this case." "It is worth bearing in mind how easy it is, in this case, for the appellant to avoid any risk of criminalisation. It refers to the placing of pallets on the town and village green, but the town and village green occupies about 3% of the whole of the appellant's site, and it is difficult to see why this part in particular would be needed for the placing of pallets." And as for the more fundamental question raised by Lord Stevens of whether continuing use would be a criminal offence, the answer given by my lord, Lord Justice Lewison, and Mr. Charland has referred to this, paragraph 71 and following of the Court of Appeals judgment, which your ladyships and lordships will find at page 212, is respectfully adopted, in particular 63 to 85 deals with this. Lady Arden raised a point about New Haven and asked Mr. Charland whether it was obiter. It's right to just direct the court, if I may, to Lord Justice Lewison's judgment in relation to this. Paragraphs 47 to 8 deal with this in the bundle at page 207 to 8, which he concludes that, yes, it is obiter. Finally, the section 12 point. Well, it's not just Mr. Charland that wasn't able to unearth a tremendous amount on why it was that section 12 was considered necessary, my lord, Lord Sales' point. But we would refer your ladyships and your lordship to a paragraph in, pardon, Remington. We've been referred to Remington. We do know from the Oxfordshire case, paragraphs 5 and 7 at bundle page reference 566, that section 12 was the first time that the term village green was used in legislation. So, doing the best that we can, Remington provides a general provision or tells us of a general public nuisance provision. It appears that section 12 provides much more specific provisions that relate to village greens. Now, I don't think that's a complete answer to my lord, Lord Sales' question, because if the general provision is fit for the same purpose, there would be no need for section 12, and Parliament is assumed not to have legislated unnecessarily. But that's as far as we've managed to get in the hour that we've had over lunch. I would just simply refer the court to Oxfordshire 5 and 7. So in conclusion, Parliament and the courts have devoted a great deal of attention to the subject of TVG registration in recent years. The result is an elegant and comprehensive system capable of adopting the particularities of individual cases, including where co-existent user crops up. Where an imbalance between public and private rights has been perceived, measures have been taken by Parliament to address this. Even since the Growth in Infrastructure Act, which it's right to acknowledge came too late for this appellant, user as a right could be defeated by the mere service of a notice on the local authority. It is very clear that neither Parliament nor the courts have countenanced what Lord Hope in Oxfordshire described, paragraph 67, as the third question. This appeal, we respectfully agree with Mr. Charland, is in effect an attempt impermissibly to ask that third question. And Mr. Charland's pointed out that the appellant's reference or citation of that particular part of Lord Hope's judgment, in the grounds of appeal at least, misses that all-important last four sentences. In order to introduce the third question, the appellant resorts to this: "A landowner cannot acquiesce to his own criminality, but that, my ladies, my lords, is to mistake consequence or cause." And if right...
Sorry, Mr. Walt, just before you move on, there's one point that you mentioned that I just wanted to ask you about. You said, "Under this statute, user as a right could be defeated by mere service of a notice on the public authority," I think.
Yes, my lord, that is part of the...
Oh wait, the question was, what's the provision that makes that clear?
My lord, I skurted over in the interest of time the detail provided by my lady Lady Arden. If your lordship would go to those paragraphs, in extent so, the exact detail is given, but to try and...
That's probably sufficient. When you say Lady Arden, you mean in the Lancashire case?
In Lancashire.
Thank you.
That is detailed by Lady Arden.
Yeah, actually.
Finally, my ladies, my lords, if the appellant is right, as your lordships and ladyships have observed, it would have implications far beyond this particular case and upset a regime which functions well to properly balance the interests of landowners and those such as Mr. Tucker, the second respondent, and other local inhabitants admittedly, for whom the opportunities for recreation on this TVG are so valued. My ladies, my lords, unless there are other matters with which I can assist the court. I beg your pardon, there is one further point that I've been provided with.
Lord Stevens was worried about the safety of the narrow bit. Does he mean eastern transit? Because that's not in the...
Yes, well, finally, Lord Stevens raised a point about the narrow bit. If Lord Stevens means by that the eastern transit, that is not part of the town and village green.
I understand that.
Yes.
But just tell me something, Mr. Walt, before you stop. Assume for one moment that somebody purchases the landowner's interest 20 years from now. And that person then turns to his legal advisers for assistance as to what he can and cannot do on the land. Assume that he's a foreign purchaser and has absolutely no idea as to what to state himself. How does he know?
It would be down to pre-contract inquiries. The conveyancing solicitor would need to make inquiries. In this particular case, it wouldn't be a difficult exercise. In some other cases, it might be more difficult, I acknowledge that. But that is what would have to happen. So when I referred earlier to successors entitled, I did contemplate a long period of time where it would be necessary, as in any conveyancing situation, where one unearths easements and other rights that affect a piece of land that is to be purchased, must be investigated properly. My lords, my ladies, unless there are other points with which I can assist the court, those are our submissions.
Thank you. It looks as if you've covered everything. Thank you very much, Jade. So we come back to Mr. Holland for your concluding submissions in reply.
I'm grateful. I'm mindful of the time. And so if I appear to gabble through what I have to say by whatever reply, I apologize. No doubt if what I say is either incomprehensible or leads to further questions, I will be stopped in my tracks. My ladies...
I think, Mr. Holland, just to clarify things, I think you put in for half an hour, didn't you?
I did. I did. I've got 45 minutes, though, if we're finishing at four, but I'll try and get to...
Well, actually, I might take issue with whether you have 45 minutes.
Okay. Well, can I say this? I'll proceed. Let's see what we get.
That's what we shall do. Thank you.
My ladies, my lord, overall, it's a deeply unattractive proposition to say, as the respondents do, that Parliament has intended to propound a system of registration by which a landowner's previously lawful activities on its own land become criminalised and registration takes place without any consideration of the potential criminality. That is the respondent's primary case. That is why the Court of Appeal have sought to read down the Victorian statutes in the way they have to avoid the consequences of that. Now, the respondents, in order to succeed, have to persuade you that this case is determined by binding authority. Otherwise, they have put forward no rational explanation as to why the registration system should result in this outcome. My learned friend, Mr. Charland, was asked by Lord Burrows, "Well, why is this?" And they could offer no rational explanation. Otherwise, well, you're bound by red car to come to that conclusion. That is, we say you're not, and it's a deeply unattractive proposition. Mr. Charland yesterday afternoon started with a series of jury points, which presumably were intended to undermine the bona fides and the merits of my client's case, but which don't strike us as affecting one way or the other the point of legal principle, which you have to decide. But I'll deal with them anyway. So far as the grant of the right of way to the residence of the Maltings is concerned, again, we say this is neither here nor there, but the point is this: the grant of a private right of way is a very different thing to the imposition of a TVG by statute. First of all, it's a deliberate and conscious act by the landowner. It's not one imposed upon it by statute or by inquiry or local authority. Secondly, it's a limited and defined right granted to a limited and defined number of people as opposed to an unlimited and expandable right granted to an unknowable or unlimited number of people, that is, those in the locality. Thirdly, the right of way is generally, as I think it's here, in common with the landowner. Thus, the landowner's rights are preserved expressly, and thus the landowner takes precedence and can do anything, subject only to not unduly or unreasonably interfering with the rights of the dominant owners. And fourthly, and this comes into focus when we're dealing with health and safety registration, we can control the use of the right of way, provided we don't unreasonably interfere with the exercise of the dominant owner's rights of way, hence the ability to put the speed humps in in Saint Geraint. So, for example, given the example Sota talked about in arguments, suppose the Health and Safety Executive said to us, "You have to separate the pedestrians out from the vehicles." We would be able to paint a line along either the waterfront or the side of the eastern transit and say to pedestrians exercising the right of way, "You have to use that for your own safety." That, we would submit, would be a reasonable method of control and would not be an unreasonable interference with the right of way. The problem with the interference on the TVG is that we're unable to do that. We are not able to control the exercise of the recreators in exercising their rights of recreation. In order to do something, we have to control our own behaviour, such that it's said, "Right, well, there is a clash on the TVG, potentially, it's unsafe," says the HSE, "between pedestrians and HGVs. You've got to do something about it." We can't say to the recreators, "Sorry, you have to only occupy this particular part of the TGV. They have a statutory right to use it all. So in order to comply, we have to control our own behaviour." And that's the point, whether it's warranted by law or not, whether there's a defence to any prosecution under the Victorian statutes to say, "Oh, well, we were forced to do this by the Health and Safety Executive." That might be well met with, but well, hold on. You didn't need to control the behaviour of the recreators, as you sought to do, by putting a fence in or by restricting their activities, their walking to a particular park. You could have controlled your own activities by effectively limiting the number of HGV crossings of the TGV, or doing it at night, or doing it another way. That's the point. We can't... Unlike a right of way, well, we have a right, it's our land, we have a right to do what we want, subject to not unreasonably interfering. And we can't do that with a TVG. It's a completely different right. And besides, interference with a TVG is a criminal offence. It's a public nuisance. I accept that's a tort if an individual can prove particular damage, but it's also a criminal offence under the Victorian statutes. And for what it's worth, I agree with Lord Sales in that if the recreators were doing anything on the TVG that they weren't entitled to do, that would be a trespass and maybe even a nuisance. And Mr. Charland then made the sweeping assertion that agricultural land and quarries had been registered. Well, the only reference to quarries we can see is a passing reference in paragraph 80 in the speech of Lord Scott in Oxfordshire. He says it was mentioned in submissions that a quarry had been registered. There's no reference to that in the record of the oral submissions. There's no case has been found to support that. And we have no details of what the quarry was or what was done there. I venture to suggest that if a quarry has been registered, it wasn't an active quarry. The idea would only be the most foolhardy of recreators who would want to exercise on a active quarry with all the shop blasting and machinery that would be carried on there. So the quarry is a rare, there's no evidence to support that. But there is a more fundamental point here, and that is this: We clearly say in our submitted written case that this is the first time commercial premises have been sought to be registered as a TVG. We put that out there, and no example has been provided by the respondents to contradict that. And we deal with it particularly, and I would draw your attention to it, in paragraph 10 of our written case, footnote three, we deal specifically with the various examples that Lord Justice Lewison suggests in the Court of Appeal in this case. The Rocks was an unopposed registration, and the case that my learned friend relied upon, the New Windsor case, the case of the car park, that was found to be land subject to rights of common centuries before the car park was installed there. That car park has now been removed, and it's a park as it once was. That is simply, it doesn't prove anything like what Mr. Walt said it brings. So there is no example of industrial premises being registered. And it goes further than that. My learned friend, Mr. Walt, refers to, I think it's coexistence, or co... His phrase was, forgive me, coexisting rights or coexisting behaviour. But there's very little, few examples of that. There's the Lang case, a registration failed there. There's the Humphreys case, registration failed there. There's the Lancashire case, as I read that judgment, category A, a land A, was a playing field, and that failed for other reasons. The only case where there'd been coexistence behaviour that's been registered was Redcar, and that had ceased, of this case. So the tenor of Mr. Walt's submissions was to the effect that, well, we are seeking to restrict what had previously been the wide ambit of the statutory scheme. That's not right. I made the point to Lord Burrows yesterday that there's nothing wrong with it being difficult to register a TVG, but there's few, if any, examples. We would say what we're doing is not restricting what was previously been the wide ambit of the TVG statutory scheme. We are trying to rein it back in from the extension that's been granted in this case. This case is the first case where land has been registered, where the landowner has been carrying out this type of activity throughout the 20-year period. The respondents have given you no example to suggest that that's in any way a usual occurrence. In fact, quite the opposite. So to Lord Burrows, we would say, we are not trying to restrict the statutory scheme. We're trying to rein it back from an unwarranted extension, which has occurred as a result of the Court of Appeal's decision in this case. Access to the grapevine's already been dealt with. If you look at paragraph 11 of Mr. Justice Barling's judgment in 1633 of the inspector's report, it's clear there's the grapevine is surrounded by rights of way. The next point, we don't say that Redcar was decided per incuriam. Redcar decided what it decided. The judges, as been pointed out, the judges in the Supreme Court, Redcar, were not asked to consider this to see, this particular. In the same way, the landowner in Redcar was a local authority. Now, the point which succeeded in New Haven and Lancashire wasn't argued in Redcar. It might have been because the land might have been held, subject to some sort of statutory scheme. But that wasn't argued, but that doesn't mean we say Redcar was decided per incuriam. In curiam. Mr. Charland then took you to the definition of land and pointed out that it's width. But as I think has been pointed out today, that has been subject now to a substantial gloss. Whether Lord Sales thinks it's in the definition of land or construction of section 15, that the effect of the Lancashire decision by the majority is as set out, we would gently point out by Lady Arden and Lord Wilson in that case, effectively to remove from the ambit of land which can be registered TVG, land owned by local authorities, subject to statutory schemes. I won't go into, I'm sure I've lost, haven't got the subtlety of that particular finding, but that's the point. So simply to point out that there's no limit... So simply to point out that there's no limit in the statute to land, doesn't mean that 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 applies to all sorts of lands without any form of gloss. And it means that there's nothing impermissible necessarily in the courts taking a view that, well, the statutory scheme can't apply to a particular type of land. Mr. Charland then drew your attention to section sixteen of the two thousand six Act. That's the provision which allows landowners to apply to deregister. Well, we submit that doesn't impinge in any way, it doesn't throw any light on the quite separate principle as to why the TVG should be registered in the first place. Simply because a landowner can apply to deregister, it doesn't have any, say anything about the principles upon which it should be registered in the first place. And in any event, the test set out in section sixteen six, which is the test you apply. There's no authority on that and there's nothing to say, nothing to suggest that the fact that it shouldn't have been registered in the first place is part of that test. And for what it's worth, my instructions are that this tract of land is twelve hundred metres square in area, which would mean that in order to deregister, we would have to apply effectively, supply a replacement land. We'd have to supply that. So far as the staged photos are concerned, I didn't make the point that those photos portrayed regular activity. I did that for orientation, but in any event, what they do show is HGVs on the TVG. And the evidence is quite clear that they drive across there regularly. Sorry, Lord Stevens.
I'm sure you're going to be coming to it. But the, one of the points that was made was that you had not identified what previous activity carried on by the landowner and particularising it was now going to be a criminal offence.
Yes, I didn't because I thought it'd be blindingly obvious. If you go to section twelve, if any person do any other act whatsoever to the interruption of the use or enjoyment thereof, that's of the place agreed, as a place for exercise and recreation. I would have thought the constant driving of heavy goods vehicles, one every two point six six minutes in an eight hour day, would be clearly such an offence. You're forcing, and the evidence of Justice Barling is there is interruption, it's temporary interruption, he says. But if you are, have a town and village green and you're walking your Labrador and you have every two minutes or so to get out of the way of an HGV driving across it, I would have thought that was clearly a criminal offence. And parking a vehicle for any length of time, as there's some evidence was done by Edney, or store the occasional storage of a pallets would be. But I would have thought that was clearly an offence and my submission it clearly is.
So the question then becomes whether or not there is lawful authority for doing that by virtue of your previous use.
Well, if you read down, if the Court of Appeal are right, yes, that's the whole point. The whole point is that the Court of Appeal say, Redcar says effectively, it's not one size fits all on registration, there's a frozen moment in time, everything's preserved in aspect. The landowner is entitled to continue to do what he can prove he did before. And the recreators are entitled to do what they've been doing. So that's right. So no more, no less. And sorry, I was trying to explain to Lord Stevens, if I may.
Yes, of course, yes, you finish.
And therefore, and if you then interpret the Victorian statutes, if you read them down by saying you add the words, provided it's warranted by law, not warranted by law, then yes, you can have that. But it involves not only, as we pointed out, disagreeing with Lord Hoffman's one size fits all, the registration provision, but it also avoids reading unnecessary and unwarranted words into the Victorian statutes. Sorry, Lord Sales, I apologise.
No, no need to apologise at all. And just on your example of driving HGVs across the TGV with people having to get out of the way, I mean, that sounds like the deference principle that was addressed in the Lewis case. So your argument, insofar as it applies to the HGVs, would seem to apply to the golfers as well. Because obviously when they're driving or walking past and the recreators defer to them, they're interrupting the recreators' use. So doesn't this example at least show that you are seeking to go behind the actual decision in the Lewis Redcar case?
Well, I think I hope I've already addressed that. My, the Redcar was not asked to consider the Victorian statutes. And I don't know whether it could have been possible to, or it might have been possible to argue in the Redcar case that if the register is a town and village green and if the golfing had continued, which it wasn't, then there would be a criminal offence committed if people swinging a golf club and either the ball might have hit or threatening to hit or the
But if I may, I mean, that's why I asked you whether you were saying that Redcar was decided per incuriam and you said you weren't. But the thrust of this argument seems to be, yes, it was decided per incuriam.
Well, that's what you mean by per incuriam, the
Without looking at, sorry, just what I mean by it is without looking at a relevant legal rule here derived from statute, which affects the outcome on which the court gave its view.
Yes, I made the point and that's why we got permission to appeal to this court. This court has not considered the Victorian statutes, they deliberately, they consciously did not consider them in the Redcar case. Now, why it wasn't argued, what the Supreme Court were actually thinking as to whether they were, what they might have thought of them, otherwise we don't know. But yes, if per incuriam means that they're, they didn't consider this particular argument, then yes, they didn't consider this particular, now whether it might have applied on the facts of that case or not, I don't know, but I'm saying it applies on the facts of this case.
Well, I mean, that's why I was asking you about your answer about the HGVs. You do know, because the answer, well, so it would appear, because the answer you gave about the HGVs must apply equally, it mustn't it, to the golfers?
I don't know, I mean, sticking to the HGVs, we have an HGV driving over here as an integral part of our business every two point six six minutes on a busy day. And that is, we would say, is clearly a, clearly would interrupt recreation. Now, you might argue, I suppose that, as I did, as the submission I made yesterday, that golfing is another recreation. And therefore, there's a difference between someone carrying out another recreational activity such as golfing on the land, which might not be a criminal offence, and someone driving an HGV across it, which clearly would be.
Yes, I see, thank you. Just before we leave, Lewis, can I ask one other question about it, which is the point that was made, I think on paragraph twelve in Lord Walker's judgment, where he goes back to what the inspector had decided in that case. I'm sorry, I don't have the page number immediately to hand, but the basic point was that the inspector dealt with everything on the basis of Lang and the Victorian statute. And the point being made, I think by Mr. Charland, was that against the background of the actual facts and procedure that had been followed in the Lewis case, it's very difficult, isn't it, to say that the Supreme Court did not have the operation of the Victorian statutes well in mind when they gave their judgement?
I would say no, respect. If you go back, I think I've read the first instance judgment in Redcar. What happened was there were two inquiries, I think, both by Vivian Chapman. And one, there was an inquiry, and then he was asked to do a series of opinions on a second application. In his first opinion, he advised the local authority not to register, both because of the conflict with the Victorian statutes and because of deference. It was then pointed out to him that the paragraph fifty-seven of Lord Hoffman's judgment in Oxford, in the Oxfordshire case, which I think had just come out at that stage. And he then produced another opinion to say, well, I think, right, that argument is wrong, but I still don't advise the local authority to register because of the deference argument. Therefore, it went up only on the deference argument, that was all considered. And with respect, I would disagree that the Supreme Court had the Victorian statutes well in mind, they were aware of their existence, but they heard no argument on their effect at all. And we would submit that it would be wrong to suggest that they, by implication, they thought they had no application because they simply weren't argued, they were dealing with a very narrow point and they dealt with it.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, can I finally, on that, as we're at Redcar, can I deal with the scores? You asked Melon Friends to Charland what the scores were when it came to who agreed with who. And on the issue of, forgive me, on the issue of one size fits all, we say that Lord Walker, I've got the notes here, forgive me, I'm taking it out of time. Lord Walker and, forgive me, Lord Roger, agreed specifically with Lord Hoffman. Lord Brown and Lord Kerr did not. They expressly were of the view that registration only entrenched pre-existing activity. It wasn't one size fits all. Lord Hope could be read either way. If you compare what he says in paragraph seventy and seventy-one, you could say he's veering towards Lord Brown and Lord Kerr. On the other hand, if you look at what he says in seventy-two, he appears to affirm what Lord Hoffman said in Oxfordshire. That's how we read the judgments where each judge arrived at when it comes to whether registration is what I've given the shorthand to, one size fits all. Can I move on? Melody Arden discussed with me yesterday whether I could give any examples of the difficulties in prosecution. Well, Mr. Charland gave her one yesterday and this morning. It is the so-called headroom, the Tuesday afternoon point. It is sent by both Mr. Ward and Mr. Charland. I don't know how it's relevant to the matter of principle, but in any event, on the facts of this case, it's unlikely because we have headroom, we have a, we can increase what we've done threefold up to the level of tonnage that was passing through the port at the highest in the twenty, within the twenty year period. But we could triple the uses, what Mr. Charland says, but what does that mean? It seems to mean, according to Mr. Charland, we can up the tonnage passing through the port to, I think it's four hundred, four hundred forty-four thousand, forty-five thousand, which was the highest level of tonnage during the twenty year period. But are we limited then to the number of ships? Can we ship that tonnage through more ships? Because they're smaller and the harbour is silted up. Can we, on the other hand, the maximum figure for ships was four hundred and thirty-two. Are we limited to four hundred and thirty-two ships? If we are, can we make them four hundred and thirty-two bigger ships and increase the tonnage going through the port? We don't know. Can we increase the tonnage so that the most of it is seasonal? No doubt, the good burgers of misty like to walk on this key in the nice summer months, May, June, July and August. So what happens if we want to increase the tonnage seasonally and put most of the increased tonnage through the docks in June, July and August? Will that be, and therefore by implication, increasing the traffic over the TVG in June, July and August? Can we do that without committing a criminal offence? What happens if we want to go green? And instead of using HGVs and dock runners, we want to use smaller electric vehicles, which will carry less. Are we entitled to the same tonnage passing through the port, but more frequent vehicular movements because they're smaller electric vehicles? Is that allowed without us committing a criminal offence? We simply don't know. Sorry, Lord Sales.
What's your answer to the point made on section one nine two of the Town and Country Planning Act? That if there is doubt about what your rights are, you could apply for a certificate of lawful use? And resolve that doubt?
That's a planning act, certificate for lawful use is a planning, it might be lawful, we've got lawful, we can, we can, there's nothing wrong with planning here, it's nothing to do with it. We've got planning permission to do what we're doing. It's whether it's a criminal offence under the Victorian statutes, that's got nothing to do with it.
Yes, thank you.
I mean, same way as planning has nothing to do with restrictive covenants. Simply because I get planning permission to build another house in my garden, doesn't mean I, that gives me free rein to build it in breach of someone's restrictive covenant. It's got nothing to do with it. Fitch and Fitch, Melon Friend, Mr. Charland took you to the facts of that case. I would simply direct you to how Lord Hoffman viewed it in Oxfordshire. Can I direct you to paragraphs five and fifty-one of his speech in Oxfordshire, five, six, six? Paragraph five, he refers to, in Fitch and Rowling, the custom was to use some land at Steeplebumpstead in Essex for all kinds of lawful games, sports past and at all seasonable times of year. And then if you go to fifty-five, fifty-one rather, he says, he describes Fitch and Fitch was a sequel to Fitch and Rowling. So we would submit it's clear that Lord Hoffman regarded Fitch and Fitch as being a seasonal right. That's the clear implication of that case. Secondly, the right is a right to play games. It's not a right to walk your dog, the right to walk your dog wasn't known at that time. It was the example of what happens if you want to play cricket during a hayfield, but that's the whole point, they couldn't play cricket whilst the field had a crop of hay on it. That's what Fitch and Fitch decides. And thirdly, in any event, whether it's a seasonal right may not be the most relevant point in this. All Fitch decides is that the inhabitants could not interfere with the landowner's use except by a reasonable exercise of their customary right. It did not decide that the common right, if being exercised fairly, must still give way to the landowner's rights. And that's the point. Not only is it factually distinguishable, it doesn't prove what was asserted. So far as Lang is concerned, this Justice Sullivan decided that on more than just deference, I've given you the paragraphs, but it's sixty-four to sixty-eight, seventy-three and eighty-two. But more importantly, if you look at how both Lang and Humphreys are dealt with by Lord Hoffman, he seems to disapprove them or show mildness on the facts. He seems to say that, well, they're wrong to say that there's a mild agricultural activity would be a criminal offence or renders the TVG incapable of registration. He doesn't grapple with or seek to deal with them, the reasoning behind those decisions. And neither, although certainly the Lang case has ever been specifically disapproved. All that Lord Hoffman was saying in Oxfordshire, we would submit is that the landowner has residual rights. If a TVG is registered, the landowner still owns the land. And the landowner can do whatever, whatever he is entitled, what, what, the landowner can do whatever does not interfere with the recreational rights. That's always been the case. But the point is that traditionally, recreational rights have left the landowner with no more than residual rights because he's unable to do anything that interferes with the recreational rights. Otherwise, he commits a criminal offence. And Lord Scott's comments in Oxford, Mr. Charland drew your attention to those. Those must be viewed in the light of his minority views on the Auburn test. I won't take you to them now, but if you look at paragraph seventy-six to seven, eighty-five, eighty-seven, 97 to 8, and 105 to 107, Lord Scott would have imposed an Auburn test. He would have imposed a character test. Therefore, his opinion as to agreeing with Lord Hoffman has to be viewed in that light. He would say it wouldn't be necessary because you would never get to registration of such a land. So I've given you the score draws on Redcar. So far as the health and safety legislation is concerned, section three of the Act, which you have at 5, 4, 9, does compel an employer or someone carrying out works to protect or take steps to protect a non-employees. And we've given you, I think you've been sent the entirety of the regulations. But we would say regulation 17 is applied by regulation three to a workplace and a workplace can include a road. So we would say, certainly on the face of the regulations, regulation 17 does apply to non-employees. Dealing with section 12 of the Act and when the comment by Lord Sales that so far as it was rendering indictable offences summarily convicting or able to be convicted on a summary basis, that may be right. I think my learning junior has dug up the famous article by Miss Spencer on public nuisance in the Cambridge Law Journal, 1989. And he says, a public nuisance was an indictable offence and the trial of an indictable offence could only take place if the defendant stood in the dock and pleaded guilty or not guilty and personally. So as far as we can say, it may well be right that at common law, until I think the Magistrates Courts Act 1987, the original, public nuisance was only prosecutable as an indictable offence. And therefore, at least one of the effects of section 12 would have been to mean it was triable on a summary basis. However, it does more than that, we would submit. If Parliament had simply intended public nuisances in respect of TVGs to be triable summarily as opposed to on indictment, they could simply have said so, but they did more than that in section 12. They set out a series of specific statutory offences. And not only that, but if you look at Remington, they removed one of the key requirements of the common law offence of public nuisance in that it interferes with the exercise by the public for their rights common to all. Can I ask you briefly to look at Remington?
Remembering the time, Mr Holland, because I've let you run over anyway because you're answering some questions which actually were put to other councillors.
Okay, well, I don't, Remington, Remington sets out, the argument in Remington was he shouldn't prosecute for a common law public nuisance because effectively it had fallen into abeyance because it had been replaced by a long series of specific statutory offences. But one of the offences they adopted, one of the definitions they adopted of common law nuisance is there's an element, you have to prove that the public were inconvenienced in exercising the public right. Now, that's not an element in any of the section 12 offences. So we say it does more than simply, it's more than simply procedural.
But it's a fact to section 29 to remove that requirement by saying these things are to be taken to be public offences. And then it goes on at a second stage in that same section to create a new summary effect.
Yes, exactly.
It has a twofold purpose.
That's right. Well, section 29, it deems it to be a public, and exactly, it takes out of the equation the common law, the elements of the common law offence. Mr Wald's, very deeply, Mr Wald's account of parliamentary wisdom and the research is all very well, but none of the parliamentary research or none of the parliamentary provisions deals specifically with this particular issue. It would all be, it would all be very well if it had, but it hasn't. And Parliament has left the Victorian statutes on the books. Parliaments have left the courts to sort out the gaps in the law. Hence, Parliament didn't say anything about the principle that this court enunciated in Lancashire. And this court had to find that that was part of the parliamentary scheme without the research, without the assistance of any parliamentary wisdom and research. There's, it says nothing about the coexistence user, that's the phrase I was looking for. And the idea that somehow everything's all right because it will always be easy to tell what the landowner was doing is nonsense. Having an inquiry with all the detail depends on the landowner contesting. If the landlord doesn't contest the registration, there is no inquiry. Now, suppose the landlord, on the basis that this house upholds the Court of Appeal, landlord says, because this is used, I'm not going to be able to resist it here and doesn't, there's no public inquiry. Remember, TVG is a perpetual, so 30, 40, 50, 100 years' time, a landlord wants to do something on the land and someone says, no, that's a criminal offence. You're going to have to research back hundreds of years to understand exactly what the landowners were doing when the TVG was registered and what the recreators were doing. I have a case involving a right of way, involving behaviour in 1969 and 1974. And it's impossible to try and find people that are still alive, impossible to work out, or very difficult to work out what exactly was going on, and that's 50 years ago. This is perpetual and some of these town and village greens have been registered or in existence for hundreds of years. And it's not an answer to this case to say, oh, it'll all be all right in the night. We'll all have a public inquiry which will set out in easy digestible form exactly what one needs to know to decide whether a criminal offence is being committed or not.
We've gone on for quite a little longer than your.
Yes, I'm, I think, I'm grateful for your indulgence. The only point that I would make finally is that Mr Wald went on about the dominant and servient tenements in the rights. There is no equivalence between private law rights, between a dominant and servant landowner when it comes to an easement and the relationship between the recreators and a landowner under the TVG. The civility principle, as we've said, is not the principle of give and take. I think those are my submissions.
Thank you very much indeed, Mr Holland. Thank you very much to everybody who's made the submissions. And we know perfectly well that there are those who are either sitting behind you or remotely and assisting greatly and have already assisted greatly, and we're grateful to them as well. So we'll think about what we decide and that concludes proceedings for today.
Can I just, my client has mentioned the question of costs. They get most exercised about this. I have to formally ask you to postpone any determination of costs until after you have handed down your judgments.
Yes, I don't think you need to be anxious about us making a precipitate decision about that.
I didn't think I did, but I'm very grateful.
Thank you very much indeed. Thank you.